Hi, everyone. Welcome back to the Casual Ethnographer. This episode is part two in my coverage of the community forum held on July 21st. In this segment, you will hear from the final two speakers. They're both vying for the same seat on the Peninsula School District Board. And you'll also notice me get up a couple of times to check the camera, just like I did in part one. You will also notice that I did speak briefly while my intent was to just observe and film and not speak. Once the discussion turned to the school district, I did say a few things. And to honor the privacy of my children, I muted a couple of times and I did cut out a very small chunk. But otherwise, the rest of the footage remains unedited, besides trimming the front and the end of people walking in and out. Now, let's get to it.
So we're going to move on to our next position, of course, one that's very important and very near and dear to a lot of our hearts here. And that is Peninsula School Board Director. I will share with you, you know, we had a big issue here with the principal swap, where they took Minter Creek's principal without bothering to tell anybody in the community. And they transferred him to the middle school and decided they were going to recycle another principal out here. Well, I guess she kind of saw the handwriting on the wall that she wasn't really welcome. So she's moved on to South Kitsap. And I guess they've named a principal now that is much more acceptable to the folks at Minter Creek. So, you know, sometimes it does, you know, it does good to be the squeaky wheel. But there are some issues in the school district beyond the principal swap. You know, they've had a rough go with harassment and bullying after pretending it didn't exist for a long time. Now they've done what should be called the too little, too late harassment and bullying policy. Anyway, it is quite incomplete. And there's a lot of work to be done at the school district. There's just no two ways around that. So we're going to start with Matthew Bruin. And you were running for what position?
Two.
Position number two. And that is?
That is north. So it's the beginning part of the peninsula and then over five peninsula in front. Well, awesome. It warmed everybody up to all the issues going on in the district there. So I'm Matt Bruin, pronounced like a bear. Usually no one you're trying to talk to me. I am a Cape Peninsula resident. I live just across the Fertis Pit over here at the top by Lake Catherine. We just moved out here about three years ago. Talked about Minter Creek. I have two kids that will be in Minter Creek next year. One will be in kindergarten to buy daycare bills. And one will be in second grade. He's been there for transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade. So he's in his fourth year there. So really frustrated with what's going on. So a little bit about me, married, wife, dog, two kids, as I mentioned. We just moved out here from Seattle when the pandemic happened. And we can do all those meetings on Zoom that we just talked about. Said, hey, let's get a better quality of life, not somewhere where I can reach out and touch my neighbor's house. That's frustrating when you can see the neighbors, hear the neighbors all the time. So we got a lot of yard here. So love it. Why did I decide to run for school board? One, I'm a little crazy, apparently. I'm learning that. Two, it's a little...
Crazy to run for office.
Good grief, the amount of paperwork. It's like running for governor or something. But the other is, I grew up of the mindset of if you're going to complain about something, you should do something about it. So instead of, well, not instead of sending me emails about the Peninsula School shifts, which I did, I decided to throw my name in there. So there's nobody running there towards the end. I believe Emily and I both threw our names in there on the last day, either the Thursday or the Friday of going forward. So what's important to me, I think it's important to restore trust. We have, you know, you mentioned that there was no communication. I had four different reasons given to me on why our principal, Todd Herring, was moved to a different school. I don't know if any of those four are actually true because many of them conflict. One of them was Abby who came out here to, from Evergreen, went to Harbor Ridge, then went to Minter, who just left for South Kitsap, was, we were told, oh, she really wants to get back to elementary. Well, she just fled our district to go to a middle school. So I'm not sure that's accurate. All kinds of craziness around that. So I think it's important to include the community. These things are going to happen. I'm not an educator. Most of the people on the board aren't an educator. Shifts are going to happen. Community involvement is important. If we were told in October, hey, this is going to come in the spring, let's talk about it. Let's find a way to move forward as a community. We would be able to welcome somebody like Abby and who would then feel welcome and be able to do a good job at this school. Instead, we were told Thursday afternoon on the way into spring break, I was honestly in the back of an Uber, getting a message, oh, hey, we're shuffling all these people up and it's part of our plan. It's important for their growth was one of the reasons that we got. So we need to involve the community in what's going on. Two, teachers are a very important asset. I am friends with teachers that I had in high school and I graduated nearly 20 years ago. One of them, you know, emceed my dad's funeral. Like I'm very close to these people because of the impact that they can have on your life. We have multiple teachers leaving the district. Sometimes it's for important things like, hey, our family moved or a spouse's job. Sometimes it's, and I've heard it directly, because of issues with the school board and with the school district. That's not good. The educators are the ones who are doing the hard work, not the board. They're the ones who are raising my kids, Emily's kids, to learn what they need to be functioning adults and community members. So when we're losing those people to other districts, it's just unacceptable to me. So we need to get, make sure that they're treated as assets, not as bonds that we can move around or just treat as numbers on a spreadsheet. And then the third is that I really want there to be a welcoming, open place for students to learn. For me, I was a public school kid my whole life. I had friends that were private school and whatnot. Public school is always where it was a level playing field for everyone. It didn't matter how much money your family had, what your background was, what color your skin, who you choose to love. It was all, you had the same classes, same expectations for you to get to learn. We do have a lot of issues with harassment, intimidation, bullying. I've heard it from teachers in the district. I've heard it from parents in the district. I've heard it from students in the district. It's something that needs to be solved. It needs to be a place where people can feel safe to learn and get an education because that's what public school is. So that's a little bit about me, why I'm running, happy to answer questions as we get there. But really feel we need a strong voice who can stand up, you know, and make a difference in the district.
Thank you. School board meeting when they first did the principal.
Didn't, but you saw my better half.
We ask questions at the end as well?
Yes. First, we have our second candidate for the school board, Emily Gichar.
Hello. My name is Emily Gichar. Appreciate you guys having me out. Really appreciate you coming in here on a beautiful Monday evening. Like Matt said, I have two kids in the district. I have an eighth grader now that the school year is officially over. An eighth grader at Harbor Ridge and a junior at Peninsula High School. My daughter, who's at Peninsula High School, is also in this year too. My eighth grader is a large part of the reason that I'm running. He has been in the special education program. He has received special education services since we enrolled in the district. And that has taught me a lot about what is working and what isn't working. And I have spent a lot of time kind of fighting the system and talking with families and community members about how we can make, how they can best work with the system. And when I looked at potentially running for school board, I just thought, you know, I could instead switch to the other side and help make the system better for everyone. Because it's really hard for families, particularly when you're raising special needs kids to come in and just have to, you know, you have to fight for medical things and then they get in the school district and it's like, well, I need these services. Why can't we just work together and kind of make things better? So that's partially why I'm running. A little bit about me, I started the district's Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Super proud of that. We started that three years ago. And it has taken on various forms throughout the couple of years, but I'm really proud of where we've taken it. We run a full family education series that works to educate families on, just, you know, on the system and what is an IEP and what services are available in the district. And I think that that model that we have taken with that, with special education specifically, could really be replicated when it comes to a lot of the harassment, intimidation and bullying. And it's like, hey, these are, this is what we are allowed to call harassment, intimidation and bullying. And this is what, this is what it looks like. And these are resources. And just, you know, just let's educate our families and our community. Yeah. So that's why I'm here. That's why I'm running. That's a really short, I practiced back to get it down, so I didn't talk too much. I'm also, I know, I don't know how familiar some of you guys are really with some of the district programs. Unified sports and unified program is, I will toot my own horn. You'd be hard pressed to find a parent who is more of a bigger supporter. I just truly believe that what happens in both comprehensive high schools as a result of that unified program is incredible. And it's just, we are really helping build just the diversity and the connections and just an incredible program that will serve these kids both with intellectual disabilities and without intellectual disabilities long term. And I just would really love to continue to see that expanded as we go and.
We're going to go ahead and open up for questions. They are running, by the way, for the position currently held by Emily. I think she got tired of being yelled at. I honestly do.
She might have.
She didn't go out here for anybody.
Okay, so I'm fairly new to the area. So are all the school board members elected here? So it doesn't happen to be the director position is open right now?
Yeah.
Has either one of you had any experience on the school board before?
No.
Okay. And is there anybody running for that position that is a current school board member?
Nope, you stopped with one of us.
And the way that it works in Peninsula School District is that they have different districts. So each one of them elects their own. We vote for all.
Yeah.
You have five districts.
But there's five?
Five districts.
Five districts. They take a map of the district and it's split and then each district has a number. And so then there's the five school board director positions that each represent in a specific geographic area.
To get where I think you're going, we are not running to lead the entire school board. Director is what the position we're running for. There's five directors.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not crazy enough for that yet.
So you're running for the director position that's in this area here?
Number two.
I don't know where the line is exactly. Somewhere around Lake Catherine, if it comes.
Okay. This is Chomps. Yeah.
Chuck already has things figured out. He announced at a school board meeting I went to that racism was caused by...
Autism.
Autism and racism.
Yes.
I have the clip on my phone if anybody wants.
I do too. My son's autistic.
Racism and autism.
I'm so confused. Because it's a very different model. Cause I worked in education for 30 years as a speech therapist. So I, the model I came from was very different, our school board. The district is divided into five parts, districts within the district. Each district has a director.
Correct.
And that makes up the school board.
Yes. You got it. You're not president.
On all of them, even the, it's not just our area. Go on all of them. Okay. Thank you.
And there's a president of the school.
Okay, I'm sorry. You say, I have one question. So you say the district did not have a bullying policy that we said you're wrong?
They did study recently.
Yeah.
Thinking the schools, the schools themselves probably have some kind of policies in place. Yes?
Whatever they were doing, we thought of things.
That's okay. Okay. Part of the issue that I saw, and I was in education for 30 years. And yes, I think that the school district I came from was doing a really good job. But part of the problem, I feel like with the bullying thing is some of it's coming from home. I feel like the parents are, because I know I spend a lot of time teaching kids. This is what you say to somebody when you're upset. This is what you do. In other words, they had not been given that kind of instruction as young children. So they come into the schools, they did have skills. And so for them, you know, and also the word bullying was really misused. Because bullying isn't one kid being mean to another kid one time. It's consistent going after the same child, time after time after time. And so I feel like if you have a good administrator at the school level and a good set of teachers, those issues are going to be solved more than at a board. You know what I'm saying? A good school is going to be giving those things already.
All the work.
Because that's how you run a good school, is take care of that issue.
Yeah. All the work is going to not shuffle up the administrators on everybody.
Anybody that's had kids at KPMES know that they're falling way short of mine.
Yeah. I think one of the things that I think is that there are pockets in the district of where buildings are being led by super strong administrators and the bullying issue is almost non-existent. And I would love for like everybody to come together, hey, what are you guys doing? How, what does this look like here? Because I think that that could really help nip some of this stuff in the butt, in the butt, like at KPMES, where it is more prevalent, like, hey, what can we do? How can we, what's your approach? How do you guys handle this? Just that collaboration could really help.
Yeah. And that's something that I, I mean, totally agree. You're going to be in good hands with either of us. We get along fairly well. But that's one of the, one of the four reasons we were told is that Todd, who is our principal at Minter Creek, was very strong in harassment, intimidation and bullying. So he was moved to a middle school, which for a school out here, it's tough to get community involvement. It's tough to get parents bought in. Seattle. We were very particular about where we were going to let our son go because we came from Seattle Public Schools. We don't care if he paints his nails. We don't care what he wears to school. He's going to be him. And we really felt that in Todd. We felt comfortable and safe sending our child there. And then we go, oh, you know, it's not our plans or it's this, it's budget. I mean, the list is long of what it was. So we shuffle them up. So now he's on, like you mentioned, we have our third principal and lasts four months for my son. The principal that I had for my daughter's kindergarten kickoff a month ago has already left the district. So now we have somebody who I've never met, who was a interim principal last year as well. Sounds like he's a great individual, will learn. But I'm with you. The first thing I said was, sort of moving this principal because he's good at this. Why don't we just raise the standard for everybody else? Why isn't the other principal, why aren't they equally as good at it?
Why don't we take a field trip down there and see how it's done?
Seriously.
Of course, they didn't bother to move him to KPMES where the real bullying is going on. No, he's a good administrator. Let's move him over to Cape Harbor. Where all the good resources go.
And we don't need to go down the track. Hope we will. That principal also left. So then they were without a principal. They backfilled that. We were without a principal and we're like, gosh, if the superintendent and board from my perspective weren't stubborn, slide Todd right back in, students have no attachment to him, you save this school from chaos. No, no, we want chaos at two schools. Because we already said it. And if we turn back now, it's going to look like, oh my gosh, we caved to community pressure, which is kind of the job of the board, like you are working for the community, superintendent works for the board. So yeah, we, we both agree with that.
Yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of complaints I've heard lately about the superintendent not responding to folks in the community, not having the communication.
Do you have personal, that pass you personally?
So angry email, angry email back maneuver. My wife and I are going on a trip because grandma takes the kids for spring break, lucky us. Message adjourned. I get a call while I'm in Portugal from Todd, our principal. Human shield reading what read sounded like to me, like a ransom note. Here's why this is good. Here's what, like, didn't you, I got an email back. It was like from the executive team. And then had the principal who was affected, who didn't know this was coming, it was involuntary. They've already told us that, have to call me and explain why it's a great thing. Like, it's kind of every case.
Yeah. And you know, with all the people not being considered, I think, of course, who we need to consider are the students. And the kids are the ones that really hit the heart of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm there as a community member.
Welcome.
Obviously, people in the community can get disappointed in a decision made at the school district level. But school board has three unique roles. Can each of you tell me what the three unique roles are?
Hire and fire the superintendent, oversee the budget, make and oversee the budget.
Can I do the third?
Sure.
Curriculum?
No.
No? Oversee the choosing of curriculum?
No.
No.
That's pretty off. That's my fault.
You did. You did. Policy, policy of procedures. Set policy of procedures.
Correct. So one of the things, so one of the things I'll say, Marsha Harris here and I serve on the board. So my question is to you, one of your top three roles is to hire the superintendent. We vote serve on the board and I've been on the board longer to see what micromanaging of the school board of that superintendent is. As a school board member, whoever of you gets on that kid, which is going to be one of you, do you believe it's your job as a school board member to micromanage what the school superintendent does? Or just to hold him or her accountable to how they do their job?
And let me clarify that question with this. Doing a humongous principal swap is not a small micromanagement issue. That's a macro. That's an macro issue. So yes, I'm sure, I mean, if I fire too many of them, something like that on me, I'm telling everybody.
So it's a chair of the KP? Oh, yeah. Let me ask my question. If there's a body of work the superintendent does over the whole year, this is one issue that pisses people off. My question is, is as a school board member, if you're elected, do you believe it's your role to micromanage a superintendent what he or she does or hold him or her accountable to the body of work over the year? I bet, I'm on my fifth superintendent and they've all made mistakes. I'm just saying, is it your job, do you expect to micromanage or hold accountable? It's easy question.
Hold accountable.
Yeah, hold accountable. I think using micromanage, you loaded it and made it unfair for us. Easy to answer. But what I would say is, yeah, it's accountability. Given that person, I'm not a superintendent, will never be one. Not going to tell a superintendent how to do their job. But do you hold them accountable and work and give them the space to be able to do their job?
Yeah, I think there's, there's goals and objectives that you set forth clearly and you give to that person, whoever's in that role. I've been through the same, same, my kids have been in the district as long as David's been on the school board. So I've been through all those superintendents do. And it's, you know, it's, yeah, it's clear goals and objectives and hey, how is, okay, where are we at now? How do we get there? Because I don't, I'm a, I'm a very action oriented person. I don't like to sit around and talk about stuff. Okay, how do we get there? But you gotta, sometimes you gotta step back and just let them run within their thing, make sure they're getting to the right place.
David, so ahead.
My kids are done with school now. My youngest is 21, but we are in this district. And one of my daughters had to go to Peninsula and the other one had to go to Cape Harbor because my daughter was in the marching band and there wasn't a marching band at both schools. That's not fair that she ended transfer from her school because she wanted to do what was her passion while her sister didn't have to. It was kind of fun at fishbowl because they got to compete against each other. One was a cheerleader for Cape Harbor, one was in the band for Peninsula. But I just didn't think it was cool that my daughter had to change her schools because she wanted to follow her passion with marching band. And the other thing with school boards you see often, and this really came evident in COVID for me because my youngest daughter, who was a senior during COVID, lost all of her actor school activities, all of her support nets. She was president of three clubs at school. She was a cheerleader. She went from that to an introvert who won't leave her computer anymore and is afraid to go in public because she lost that support net. And that was unique to COVID, but it's not unique to school boards. Because every time there's a budget crunch, the school board always holds hostage the van, those sports, the, all those things that some of the things that only bring kids to come to school.
Which school board are you talking to?
Not here. I'm talking about in general. And so what I want to say is, I want to convince them that if the budget's tight.
You didn't do that.
No, I know, I know you didn't. That's why I live here. What I'm saying is, I want to come from the people running, that that's not going to be the easy chopping block stuff, that you're going to continue to focus in on what make this place great is that we have that kind of stuff.
I am with you 100%. That, that marching band thing is so ridiculous to me because we, you know, we have this incredible community and these kids go to school together. And then you hit eighth grade and it's like, oh, I'm going to go here because of this. And I think it's terrible because it just tears these kids, you know, I mean, you've built friendships, you've built community. And now we're just going to drop you into another community and who knows how that goes for, yeah. I, I, I'm a big supporter of equity up. If, if this elementary school gets this, let's, why, why doesn't everybody have it? They've done some really cool Lego robotic stuff out here. I think at Evergreen or, yes, Evergreen. And I was like, oh my gosh, can we get this in everybody? Well, we're not there yet. I would love to get that there. Cause I just, I don't love the answer of, well, it's not in the budget, but, but it was there. But why can't we just bring everybody up?
Of course, there's a great example of how the resources get distributed. If you want to take a look at the soccer fields at Harbor Ridge, which is state of the art turf, or our cow pasture down here at KPMES. It's lumpy and weedy.
I will, I will say, when my daughter was on the soccer team at Harbor Ridge, we had to go to Copa check. And the coach literally said, can you, can any of the parents bring sand to fill it into the field? Because there was a little, there were holes and they were worried about the kids getting hurt. And I was like, what?
The Harbor Ridge has state of the art.
Yes.
They also have Todd here. So what does that tell?
They do.
Real quick, if someone asks me, sorry. We've had the same issue where like my son at Minter Creek, we've lost STEM for, I think up till third grade. So the younger kids don't have full time anymore. And he has friends. He has, he goes, Dad, why don't I get to go to school these anymore? Well, he's one pioneer because when you go across Great Bridge, you can do some more things. So really looking at, you know, equity up is a great way of saying it. Making sure that everybody has a chance is we don't have to jump across. There's already such a dichotomy. We talked about Cape Harbor, Cape Harbor and Copa being so separate. It's kind of the same with Peninsula and into Cape Harbor. It's just so separate and it shouldn't be that way. Sorry.
The stress that you can feel when you walk into schools among the staff is just off the charts. I was the office manager of an elementary for 30 years and I've now been retired a couple of years. But the changes in just the last few years with our new superintendent, new policies, it's crazy. I mean, on the state level, there are a lot of mandates that can be done. But this administration is putting even more. And it's, something has to be done on your end to take a look at it, to go into schools and talk to staff and see what you can do before you lose market teachers.
Yeah. And I've been going around.
I mean, it's terrible.
And a lot of the teachers really feel like they can't speak out.
No.
Because if they do, then we can.
They backed that up a little bit because they realized it's a bad idea.
I've had several staff members come to me and say, you know, could you talk to people about this? I'm afraid, I would like to speak out, but I need this job.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a very thankless position that makes far not enough money that they need to be able, like I said in my speech or whatever you want to call it, they need to be treated as assets, not numbers. Say we have 30 here, 50 here. It's for these individuals, probably make sure that they grow within our district. And sometimes that is moving. You have need to move to grow. And if somebody wants to get to the higher levels of education, let's get them there. But it is very important because those are the people responsible for my child's future. I'm dropping my kid off, six to bus, plus a bus, at school where he's with these people. And I can't have them extra stressed because somebody's looking over their shoulder about what they're saying or them not being able to do things. Now, I, I got questions from people before about teachers pushing like their agendas and stuff. No, obviously not. But teachers need to be responsible for the children who may have a poor upbringing at home or maybe coming from, you know, underprivileged family, God has privileged family. That's their safe space. They need to have teachers that believe in them and they can work with to get a good education, whether it's my kindergartner or my second grader or all the way up through high school.
And teachers do that. That's.
Totally.
And we got plenty. We have no shortage of kids in town.
No, no, especially out here.
But when your policy reads that 100% of students will be at grade level by X thing, I mean, come on.
What's wrong with having high goals for your kids? You know that you're not going to reach 100%.
That, okay, you just said it right there. You know that they're not going to reach that. But the stress you put on those teachers when that's your policy is ridiculous.
Something I will say is that.
Realist.
Yeah. No, I'm with you. I think, personal opinion, community members may disagree, that our board is very focused on being the best in the state or best in the country. We brag about where we go, this new program we got, trip here to see this. We're not worried about being the best for Cape Harbor. Let's start there. Let's start with the basics. Let's be the best for Cape Harbor, keep Peninsula, the area here and build from there. Starting things out that are 100%, nobody's going to be 100%. Like, we need to work to get there. And no, it's not going to. And no, it's not going to say, hey, 70 is good enough. Every teacher wants every student to succeed. Like, that's the bare minimum is every student needs to succeed. But setting out goals where you're destined to fail regardless, why would you do that? I'm not going to go out and run a marathon tomorrow because I'll die in the road. But me saying, hey, I'm going to run, my goal is to run a marathon, like, no, it's not going to work. I'll start, I'll do 5K, then I'll do a 10K, I'll do a half, so I'm done, done like four of them. Different body then. Never full, that's crazy. Like, those are the things that you need to do and yeah, you're right, that's a stress to the people.
So are you two the ones running for that position or?
It's the two of us for one position, yep. There is one other position, yeah, yeah.
I actually wanted to make a comment, so I have two children in elementary school. And I've had a couple of different issues that have not been resolved satisfactorily or I've had to reach out to the district. On a couple of occasions, I emailed the board with zero response. One issue in particular where my then third grader didn't receive STEM or social studies for the first nine weeks of school, even reached up to the state, then I got a response. But through all of this, no matter what issues I've had, the principal has been wonderful, but so has Ashley at the district. I forget her last name, but she's the CEO.
The CFO, Ashley Murphy, yeah.
So regardless of whether it was a bus issue with Mr. Bud or if it was an issue with education, she has been responsive and she has made things happen and she even made sure that a meeting was held for parents to attend. So I want to give her credit.
Absolutely, you know, fix your problems or not, communication is the first thing. Feeling her being acknowledged when you reach out, gosh, that's half the battle and it's the easiest part for the district, so it's great that.
Yeah, the community, I have been ranting about the lack of communication in this district for 12 years. And it was one thing when my daughter started in the district and I, she, if you are the parent of a young girl, they talk a lot. And she would get off the bus and she would tell me everything and I was like, okay, cool, like I'm good, maybe I'm all right. And then my son went in the district and I was like, oh, this is not going to work. I need like communication and I need, I need some back and forth. I, it drives me absolutely insane and I will beat that horse until it is dead and dead again and dead again because I, I just, I really feel like you can't over communicate and I feel like it's absolutely insane that people, you just got to send an email. And if you're not in the office, put an out of office reply.
And lots of people are having these thoughts and like, it's scary, the population in the area keeps going up, but student enrollment, not. Like, we have people that are leaving to go to a different district, homeschooling, going private school, like, we have thought that, like, gosh, is this, do we want to be a part of this? And then back to what I said, like, not going to run for the problems and we can try to solve them, so.
Yeah, they had a homeschooling fair here at the civic center.
Oh, yeah, you know.
Lots of kids, lots of kids, I'm taking each one of those.
We did online school for one year and I personally logged 38 hours on average a week.
Oh, yeah.
Dealing with my kindergartner being in online school, we are not going to go down that road because my children belong in.
I hear you, I hear you.
Online is enough for all that. So just to put a pin on everything, you were both running for the same position. So you won't be on the ballot for the primary at all, so you won't be on the general election ballot. So you've got a long slum. We see each other lots of these things.
Just a recommendation as a parent that have raised three kids, you kind of really want to know what's going on at the school, get involved in something at the school, whether it be PTA, subcommittee, because you do hear a lot of things, a lot of times you often hear the negative. But when you're at the school and you're around administrators and you're around the people, you do get a feel for what's really going on at the school. But I really feel like people tend to report bad stories to other people and then it gets spread and then everybody thinks that school's bad. And some of it's warranted, but some of it's not. And so I feel like if you kind of like do something at the school where you kind of get to know the principal yourself and you get to know what the people are like, it's, you can make a much better judgment about what's going on at the school for your own kid.
My mom's, my mom, I hope my wife's not watching. My wife, not my mom, my wife, my mom was a PTO president when I was in school. My wife is on the board at Minna Creek's PTA, so we're heavily involved there, she goes and teaches Sunday.
I was just going to say that Minna Creek has a very strong PTA. And there's no reason that somebody couldn't have picked up the load and, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing.
There's a reason they're so loud.
Have raised thousands and thousands of dollars for that school. And, you know, that like, their teachers, they don't matter. I'll take it to communication. Anything else, go ahead, Marsha.
Just to clarify, the term of the year election is just one time, right? The primary or?
No, 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 there's a primary and then a general.
You got to whittle this down.
Whittle it down.
Since you asked that question about the school board.
Yeah, there's two races for school board, ours, there's one other that also has two, so there's no school board stuff on the primary.
So these folks in November, us in August.
Yeah. You guys do it very shortly, yes.
No, we got lucky there, there was a third that signed up and it's going to be a sprint and then a marathon.
We're five fire commissioners on the ballot, so we got to whittle that down to two. Well, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
From an anthropological perspective, local politics reveal more than platforms. They show us how communities perform identity. The language, the gestures, even the seating arrangements tell a story about who holds influence and how belonging is defined. If civic spaces feel unfamiliar or intimidating, you're not alone. But they're meant to be ours, messy, imperfect and deeply human. Watching, questioning, showing up, these are acts of engagement and they are powerful.
So now that you've watched both parts, let's talk about local politics as cultural performance. I've made a few notes, so let me put my glasses on. So the first note that I made had to do with ritualized participation. So community forums often follow predictable formats, introductions, public comment, rebuttals, which mirror ritual structures in traditional societies. These events reaffirm collective values and social roles. My second point was symbolic language, the way people speak at forums invoking community, safety, heritage or the future reflects shared cultural narratives. These aren't just policy terms, they're identity markers. Number three, power dynamics in microcosm. Local politics often reveal how power is negotiated at the grassroots level. Who speaks first, who interrupts, who gets applause? These are signals of status and influence within a community. Number four, conflict as cohesion. Disagreement isn't just friction, it's a mechanism for defining boundaries and reinforcing group identity. The very act of showing up and debating, the very act of showing up and debating affirms that the community matters. And number five, material culture. Even the setting, folding chairs, if there's any name placards, if there's coffee set out, contributes to the cultural texture. These objects shape how people interact and perceive legitimacy. So I would be interested to know if you noticed anything else or if you have been to other community forums within your own community's local politics, what did you notice? Also, if you are viewing us from somewhere outside the Pacific Northwest, another part of the US, maybe even another part of the world, please drop me a line and let me know where you're watching from and what your takeaway was. Thanks again for watching. If you have any comments or thoughts, I'd love to hear them, please drop those in the comments. If you are a candidate or forum organizer and you would like to be featured or interviewed on a future episode, please reach out to me. Coming in mid-August will be part two in my three-part series about evolution. As always, I have weekly shorts about Women's Wednesday, Think About It Thursday and Funny Friday. I am also working on a piece about the culture of protest. If you are interested in participating in that piece, either on or off camera, please feel free to reach out. And as always, thank you for being here, I appreciate your presence, I'll see you next time.